If you're not noting the microphone, if you can just raise your hand, it doesn't help to just yell out they're not working. So, we already know we have an issue, we're gonna yell as loud as we can. We've asked them to turn them up, if they turn them up too loud, it creates feedback, but our position is we'd rather hear the feedback than not hear us and not hear you. So, but again, if there's an issue, just raise your hand, we'll recognize you and we'll deal with it as best we can. So, on behalf of the town of Deerfield, I call this special town meeting to order. I've examined the voter sign-in and determined that a quorum is now present. I've also examined the return of the warrant and note that it is in order. There are a relatively few number of articles, but there is some discussion to be had on many of them. And opinions certainly may differ on those articles. I just ask that we all do our best tonight to be respectful of each other. Whatever your position is, we're still part of a community and that's what we're trying to come out of here remembering at the end of the evening. So, to accomplish that, I'd ask if you'd like to speak, if you would stand when you're called on to state your name, your street that you're living on, and at that point, we will recognize you. Any motions to amend will need to be in writing, there will be no exception to that this evening. Voters should all be located in the seats here, or if you're a non-voter, I'd ask you sit over there so that you're not counted as part of any formal vote. As some of you know who have been here in the past, town meeting is run by a publication called Town Meeting Time. And it can be somewhat difficult to follow, but it's the process that we've adopted and many towns have. So, if there's a question of procedure or something that's happening, feel free to ask as well. My job here tonight is to make sure we do adhere by that however, so we will be following those rules. In terms of what will happen tonight, the proponent of the motion will stand and make the motion. It will be seconded, the proponent will then give a brief summary of what that motion is about. And then at that point, the floor will be open to questions or comments. And those questions should be directed at the moderator, and then directed, I will direct them to who should be answering at that point. So, we will be voting by a show of hands unless there are motions otherwise. So, with that, I'd like to get the meeting started. And again, as many of you may know, the individuals at the front table, I will have them introduce themselves again. I'm Dan Graves, the town moderator.
Lisa Mead, town council.
Carolyn Ness, select board member.
Trevor McDaniel, Chair of the Select Board.
Dave Wolfram, Select Board Member.
Diana Schindler, acting town administrator.
Thank you, Diana. I have two motions to start the evening. I move that the reading of all articles be waived and that prior to the reading of a motion under the article, the moderator briefly summarize the content of the article to be considered. And further, that unless objection is raised, the reading of detailed motions be waived, where the article as printed on the handout can, in the opinion of the moderator, be incorporated by reference in any motion presented.
Second.
What we're basically asking in this motion is that the formal articles that were published or posted gave you notice of the issue. So, we will rely on that posting and then briefly summarize in the motions that come before you. So, with that, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I move that the following people be allowed to address the audience during the town meeting. Attorney Lisa Mead, Brenda Hill, town accountant, Diana Schindler, Chris Curtis, MVP consultant, and Lori McComb, EMD. By our town bylaws, any individual who's not a voter or a resident of the town is not allowed to speak at town meeting. This motion will allow those individuals who may have relevant information to tonight's matters to speak before you. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto Article One, Mr. McDaniel.
I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a ten-year contract with the option for a five-year extension commencing on July 1st, 2020, with a qualified vendor selected by Mass DEP through a competitive bid process for recycling processing services for the town, subject to the Select Board's determination that the contract is in the best interests of the town and subject to town meeting approval in the spring of 2020 for funding of these services.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel, if you could summarize the motion briefly?
Sure. This motion was brought to us by the Franklin County Solid Waste District. They handle all the recycling at our transfer station along with many other towns in the community. They need to negotiate, and Springfield is where all the recycling goes. They need to negotiate for a contract, and it's a ten-year contract. Normally, we only do, I think, three-year contracts or ask for maybe five. But this is a longer-term contract because they have to negotiate on behalf of all of us. So, this is giving us the authority to approve that and then bring that to you in the spring town meeting for budgeting.
Does the Finance Committee have an opinion on this matter, Mr. Olmstead?
We recommend the article as we understood it. It is essentially what we've been doing in the past, except that we've extended it from, or it's been extended from five years to ten years. And we felt that that was certainly a reasonable thing to do.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article Two, Ms. Schwartz Ness.
Move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $78,056 for the required cash match for the municipal vulnerability preparedness round three grant award received by the town.
Second.
Ms. Schwartz Ness?
This is basically a replacement of the Mill Village culvert and the engineering for Kellaher Drive. There's $53,173 match for the culvert on Mill Village. And the engineering for Kellaher Drive is $10,874. The design work for the Green Streets infrastructure is $4,500. It's the public education and climate outreach on climate resiliency that we're gonna do in kind, as well as Lori McComb is going to be working on the evacuation plan with Great River Hydro and our emergency team as a match.
Thank you. Mr. Olmstead, Finance Committee?
As we understand it, the $78,000 represents approximately 25% of total cost of the project. I think every one of you is driven across Mill Village Road and that culvert at the north end of the road. We'll find you get a tech scare with some engineering work done here on Kellaher Drive and Mason Street, so we certainly support you.
Again, our voices are fading a little, so we just can speak up loud, the back of the room is having difficulty, so we appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Three, Ms. Schwartz Ness.
Move to pass over this article. This is for our round four grant award. It's the new grant is probably gonna be out in two weeks, but we're having our meeting on Wednesday. We do not know what we're gonna actually put in it yet. We're going to update our MVP plan by adding the South Deerfield sewer treatment plant tanks. But I'm not sure if we're actually going to put them in this round four because we need to match that up with our schedule, you know, for renovation in the sewer treatment plant. So, it might be too early. We have to spend the MVP money within a year of the award. And the problem is, you know, every few months is a round, and we've been funded. We're one of a handful of communities in the entire state that's been funded so far every round. So, I don't, I'm just worried we might actually get the money for the tanks before we're ready for the tanks. So, we, this, we're gonna move over this for right now, and then we'll come back if we need the money.
Because the makers have drawn the motion, they're noting for a second, we'll move on to Article Five, Four. Mr. Wolfram?
Okay. Move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,000 to be used as matching funds for the 2018 Emergency Management Preparedness Grant, better known as the EMPG, received by the town to purchase electronic signboard to be used for announcements for general and emergency operations.
Second.
Mr. Wolfram?
This is signage that will be in different areas of the town wherever needed to make the public more aware of things that are going on within the town, whether it's an emergency situation or if it's just general information, such as making sure people who don't have internet or something know that there's special meetings going on and things like that, to make it more visible.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented? The motion passes. Article Five, Mr. McDaniel.
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $31,000 to be added to the Select Board's staff salaries account.
Second.
So, the reason I'm asking for this-
Mr. McDaniel, if you can speak up as best you can.
I sure will. So, the reason I'm asking for this money to be put back into our account is that we've been having trouble staffing that account, our offices. It's been, ever since I've been here, it's been a hard time getting the correct staff to run the town. It hasn't been recommended by the Finance Committee because they feel like we have enough money in this account right now to finish the end of the year. But my concern is that when we're going out to hire somebody, I want to be upfront with the residents and say that we feel like this amount of money needs to be in our budget for our salaries for the full year. And I understand that if we could script, you know, save and depending on when we hire, we might wind up at the end of the year not needing the $31,000, a lot like last year. We didn't need $31,000, it rolled back to free cash. What I'm asking for is I'm really hoping to get an assistant town administrator in there and support staff to deal with the changes in our town. We have so much going on, we're getting multiple grants, we're doing a lot of work. The town is getting much busier than it has been over the last few years, and we're still way underfunded for staff. So, whether I spend all this money this year or not, and I don't have an exact plan of this amount money exactly for this staff, but we are very short in our inspections office and very short in our office here, which is the following article. But we're having a hard time hiring the people. When we go out to look for people, we don't have enough money, or they're asking for more money than we have been budgeting in the past. So, I'm concerned that we would hire somebody and they would look at that line item. I just want to make sure we have enough money in the funds for a whole year to be upfront, honest with the people to say, "We think we're gonna need 230-something thousand, 231,000 for the year," and, you know, to support the staff to run the town. And we may not need it by the end of the year, but I'm, you know, I only get one shot or two shots a year to come to you and ask you to support our department. And since we had other articles coming up, I wanted to add this on there. And you'll see the next one I'll speak to is the same kind of thing, where we may end up at the end of the year not needing it, but we want to be upfront, honest with you that every year, we think that this is what's gonna need to run the town, for the staff and support the staff to run the town. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Sure. Finance Committee?
Thank you, I'm proud. Finance Committee didn't have a particular problem with the idea of staffing. What we had a problem with was the funding. Let me see if I can explain this fairly simply. The original budget for salaries in the Selectman's Office was $200,000. We are 25% through the year. In other words, give or take, you would anticipate that we would've spent $50,000 and we would have $150,000 left. The total amount that we have left at the moment is $166,000. In other words, we're 25% through the year, and they've spent less than 17% of the budget. At that current rate, they will end up with spending about 65 to 70% of the budget. They'll have 30% left over, not including the $31,000 that they're asking to add. Our thought was, look, you do what you need to do, add the staff, run that past the Finance Committee because that is our job to make a recommendation on it. And if we need to go back to town meeting, then we can do that. We have a town meeting coming up the end of April. We are three months through the year. It's seven months between now and April. They're not gonna add anyone to the staff for at least a month. So, we're talking at most a half a year. We have plenty of time. We also have the Town's Reserve Fund that we can look at if necessary. The money is in the budget, you don't need more. Why put more money in the budget if you don't need it? And the arguments that I'm making here in this one will also, you know, you can use those same arguments or we'll use the same arguments for the next article as well. Now, does anybody's got any questions?
Brecky?
Was this presented to the Personnel Committee?
No, the Personnel Committee has not met this year.
Yes.
Mullenberg, Hillside Road.
And here you-
David Mullenberg, Hillside Road. If they talk to you 17%, is that because there are a number of positions that are not filled?
There's one, that's correct, there's one position that's not filled.
And what is that salary on hold or?
I believe it's right around, I think you were talking about $70,000. So, in other words, there's $17,000 or $18,000 that hadn't been spent because there's been nobody in it, give or take.
Mr. McDaniel, would you like to comment or?
I would. The Reserve Fund, I can't go to the Reserve Fund because that is typically used for an emergency, and I'd like to keep it that way. It would be for unanticipated, something I wasn't aware of, we weren't sure, a bridge goes out, something like that, we need a transfer. This, I'm perfectly aware that we are short-staffed. And again, I'm not saying we're gonna spend all the money, just like last year when it turned back because I didn't have the ability to get the staff in there. We had just tonight accepted the resignation of our Assistant Town Administrator. We were really hoping to have that position filled and then add on the other support we're needed to get the work done in the town. It's been very difficult to hire somebody, very difficult, you know, to find somebody to do the work and to run through all the different, you know, times you've gotta ask for money, times you can't ask for money. I understand Skip and the Finance Committee's concern. I'm just asking and wanna be upfront, transparent, and tell you upfront what I think we're gonna need. And I leave it up to you to trust the Select Board to do what we need to do to run the town. If, like every other year, if we don't use it, it will go back to you. We're not using the money for anything else.
Mr. Upton?
Yes, I understand both issues here, both sides of the issue. I aim on the Finance Committee. And the reason why I had trouble with recommending this article was that there's no job description. And there's money available in this year's budget to hire a person. But I just felt, sitting on the Finance Committee, I would not be doing my job to simply say, "Hire somebody with no job description and not know him at all." I just did not feel comfortable with that, especially when supposedly there's a ballpark figure out there and we do have money in the budget for this year. And as Skip had mentioned, we do have an annual town meeting coming up in April. And I just felt if we were coming up short, we could address it at that point. I don't believe we'll be coming up short. But I do understand Trevor's point, so it's up to the voters here.
Yes.
Allison Vanderhoff, Hillside Road, I'm also on the Finance Committee. I was the opposing vote for this, and I think that the funding is there. The Finance Committee agrees that. The Finance Committee voted to not recommend this article, but for me, the reason to oppose was fairly seated on the fact that this position and the staff has been so hard to fill. And it's hard to imagine applying for a job that's not fully funded. So, for me, that was motivating and why I was the opposing voice.
Yes.
Erica Ross, Corino, Crossing Road. I just wanted to say that, I just this morning, and someone else was also in the Personnel Committee, which I know has been empty. And so, I believe that is part of what you're referring to, that we don't have job positions because we haven't had people in the Personnel Committee. So, I'm really excited to work together and make this really much more organized of a process with a job description, we have what the range is, we have what the expectations are, all of that. So, I'm really excited for that. Right now, I feel strongly that I trust the Select Board. They're out there looking for these people sort of without our support, because I'm really glad that they're here. And so, at this point, I really feel strongly that I want to support what you're seeing in terms of having trouble hiring, and that extremely seems really reasonable. Thank you.
In the back?
Natalie, so Natalie's arrived. Are we having trouble retaining people because the salary is not adequate for the work that's going on? Are we having trouble recruiting people because the salary's not adequate for what's the job entails?
Yes.
Yes.
I hope that you have to understand why we have to turn over. I can tell you, I've been around for a number of years as an office for a current administrator, or I apologize, permanent town administrator or filling town administrator, but it seems like that position is revolving work.
Yes.
Every time that position changes, there's a lag time in getting work done in this town. It takes time for that position to get up to speed. And when we lose town administrators and assistant town administrators right close to each other, it defeats your ability in this town's ability to get things done before. We need a solid plan, we need to go out and recruit and hire good candidates at a fair wage.
Yes.
And hopefully, they stick around and bring some stability to that office so that we can get something done. So, if it's a matter of approving $31,000, putting it to account, if they don't use it, they come back to the town, it'll revert back to free cash, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'd like, just, you know, town government is something that's very true and dear to me. And I hate seeing it as dysfunctional as it is right at the moment. You know, there's a lot of things that are happening and probably it's because we're not getting the talent that we need in some of the positions. And, you know, yes, we're asking for $31,000 right now, but we don't want to have to go back to another meeting later on to make sure that we have funding for somebody that we hire now. We want to make sure funding is in place. So, they have a guarantee, the next fiscal year, they're gonna have a job. You know, we can't afford to keep having these revolving positions within town because things just fall through the cracks. And when that happens, we get in trouble.
Yes.
John Brecky, Comptec Drive. Have you had any applicants refuse the position because of the low wage?
Yes.
Yes. And just to address your point, the Assistant Town Administrator's position grade and step was determined. And this is an existing job that we're filling, so it's been there for a number of years.
Any other comments or questions? We call the motion, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. So, this'll be a little bit of a repeat.
Article Six, Mr. McDaniel.
So, let's see, Article Six, "I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $14,000 to be added to the Inspections Department's salary account."
Second.
So, very similar to the same, we're looking to reorganize the position. We've had a retirement out of the inspections office. We're, we have applications out, our job description out, add out. We have some applications coming in, some interviews to start. And we're looking at re-engineering that position. It was a part-time, you know, we had one person in there that did two jobs for a long time, and then we had a helper who worked and did a lot just in her short amount of time. But she's retired, and we looked at moving that position to more of a, obviously helping the building inspector and all those inspectors, but also more land use, working with their planning boards or zoning boards to handle a lot of the stuff that kind of walks down our hall and we're handling down here. We'd like a really competent person to be educated in land use, to help in the inspection stuff and also work with the land use boards, give them some relief and some support. So, that's generally, and again, we have the same thing where if the stars align and we don't hire anybody for three months or two months, we may wind up with enough money in there. We looked at the two positions, we had funded a position, you would all had funded a part-time position to fill in that department. We felt with the retirement of the last person that's in there, we would combine the two salaries that are in there. That comes out to about $39,000. We looked at the job description, the needs that we feel might be needed in that position. It might be around 50 to 54, 52. So, that was the difference between the 39 and the amount we were thinking of 54, so that's why we asked for 14. Again, we'll probably get to the end of the year and we'll roll it back, but we just wanted to have it there in case we had a candidate come in that we could get behind and support.
Thank you. It's my understanding the Finance Committee has already stated they did not vote in favor of this?
Let's see. Our argument was the same on both of these, that there's money in the current inspections Department budget to cover everything that Trevor mentioned tonight for the rest of the year.
Comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Motion carries. Article Seven, Mr. Wolfram.
Move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,500 to be added to the Planning Board account.
Second.
Mr. Wolfram?
This is to supplement the Planning Board and also give them the ability to hire a professional planner to assist in some of the things that are going on in town. That we used to have the funds there before, and they were dropped. And as a board, and some of the things that are happening within the town, we felt it was important to augment the part-time board with some professional people and their opinions.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends this article. The $7,500, it's really a matter of where the money's coming from. Up until, over the last two or three years, there's been money in a revolving fund that the Planning Board could use. That has kind of dropped down, and so they need the $7,500 back in, which is what they had four or five years ago in the town.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Eight. Ms. Schwartz Ness.
Move the town vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 531, to establish a special fund for the celebration of the 350th anniversary of Deerfield's incorporation, a special celebration sponsored by the town for the benefit, enjoyment, and edification of its residents and visitors.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Schwartz Ness?
We have a donation account that people can put their donations in. This account is specifically designed for the money that was voted from our town meeting in the spring, which we anticipate asking for $10,000 every year for the next three years. So, there'll be a total of $40,000 in that account. Our current budget, we are just estimating around $100,000, which we will fundraise the difference. But this would be a specific account for town money that is set aside from the town meeting vote in this every spring.
Thank you. Question or comment?
Just for clarification purposes, 4453, aye?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
531.
I'm sorry.
Just in case people want to look it up when they hear.
Yes.
53 aye.
I'm sorry, I thought it was one. Okay. Thank you, John.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Nine, Ms. Schwartz Ness.
Move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain and to raise and appropriate by borrowing the sum of $358,780 to fund said purchase or taking along, as well as all other costs incidental and related to acquire the parcel of land for the purchase of $357,280. Said land identified as approximately 9.2755 acres, give or take. Plan Book 140, Plan 41, located off of Marigan Way and owned by New England Natural Bakers by deed recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds, Book 7183, Page 121. The acquisition of the said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Deerfield and to be used for the general municipal purposes or for resale, to authorize the Select Board to in fact sell said property for economic development purposes- for economic development purposes as they deem appropriate, to be under the care, custody, and control of the select board, and to meet this appropriation to authorize a treasurer with approval of the select board to borrow said sum under Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds or notes of the town upon such terms as the treasurer and the select board shall determine, and that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of the costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount of authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount.
Second.
Ms. Shores Ness?
This is for the purchase of the Oxford Pickle property back from New England Bakers for the same amount as we sold it to New England Bakers, plus about fifteen hundred dollars in closing costs. It's obviously important to control this property, it's the center of town. We would like to have increased our tax base, provide good jobs, and have a good neighbor. We have the Dumont Corporation on one side of the Oxford Pickle property, our town garage, and so we want to purchase this back so that we can resell it.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends this article. Initially, I'm not sure what the dollars were, but we purchased it substantially more than the three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. And we certainly feel that it's worth that three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. In addition to that, we feel that it's really desirable for the town to control that property. So we strongly urge you, does take a two-thirds vote, but we strongly urge you to support the select and the Finance Committee.
Yes, sir.
John Oliver, North Hillside Road. What is the significance of the statement about taking by eminent domain? And how, if in any way, does that address the financial aspect of this?
Attorney Mead?
So, it's a general provision that we add when we're taking property or getting property for sale, in case there's a title problem that we can't clear. If we actually do the taking, it would clear the title problem. So it's general language. We have a, we're going to have a, there's a right of first refusal, that's why we're here tonight. So this will be done by a regular deed, likely not like by eminent domain, but it's just general language.
Okay, so that doesn't affect, I mean, if that were to come to pass, it wouldn't, we would still have to purchase.
Oh, no matter what, you'd have to pay the fair market value.
Thank you.
Any, yes?
Weenie Classy, Riddlewood Drive. What do you mean by economic development purposes? Is that strictly commercial or can it be residential? For example, the common thing is to build a first of all, originally, I think, regeneration.
Our intention is to increase the tax base and have good-paying jobs. We want jobs that would allow people to live in Deerfield and be able to have a family. So the idea is to look for a buyer that is, would be an enhancement to the town.
And you don't consider residential property tax assessment?
I mean. Well, it's economic, there's a multiplier with economic development, whereas residential usually ends up costing the town some money. So in the long run, it's important if we're going to control this property, and we've had the expedited permitting district in that area so that we can facilitate a faster permitting process if we find the correct candidate.
Does the voters have a say in what that economic entity might be? Or do you folks make that decision?
We ultimately make that decision. But obviously, if we're negotiating with somebody, then people have input, always. We always listen to people. But we're looking for a good neighbor. And we're looking for somebody that would have offered good jobs. We don't want a company to come in and then move to China. And we have the permitting process that we go through.
At which point we can make our statements.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Upton?
Two things, I guess. One, I would, just wondering what the legal costs have been since we've been involved with this project, as far as when we first sold it and now through the process of buying it back. Is there some issues with it as far as water and so on and so forth? So I was just wondering what that total dollar amount was as far as legal expenses to.
Every time we had an extension, what?
Well, so.
It was a few dollars, right?
So right now, since two years ago, three years ago, our firm has been on a flat fee with the town. So the legal costs associated with this take, with this purchase are the registry costs and the title costs, not our regular legal costs. Those are all part of the regular flat fee that we pay, that the town pays us monthly. When the town first purchased it, it was a different firm, and that was in early 2000s. So I don't know what it would have been our title cost at the time. There were zoning issues that we did and rezoning that was done. So I don't know what those costs were. When we, when the town purchased, sold it to New England Natural Bakers, there were a number of extensions that were a part of it. But then there was some cleaning up of the title that had to be done in order to contemplate or to finish that actual sale. So I don't have that number off the top of my head, I can't tell you what that is.
Oh, you could give me an estimate?
I can't even, I can't even guess what it was. I can't, I mean, I can't, I just wouldn't be fair.
But those are funds that we'll look at trying to recap and resell it.
When we go to resell it, Jeff, certainly we're going to get more than thirty-five thousand an acre. We sold the Dumont property for about a hundred thousand dollars an acre.
Yeah, no, I understand. I was wrong, if you remember correctly, I was very upset when we were selling it for thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars.
So you're not upset that we're buying it back for the same amount?
About a hundred thousand dollars an acre, if you remember correctly, and that was several years ago. The other thing that I'm a little curious, because the statement's been thrown out several times, and I'm not arguing for one or the other, but every time residential is mentioned, it's kind of, the public is led to believe that it's not, or it's costly to the town. And I understand that if you're putting kids into a school system.
That's what really we're talking about.
Could you please explain to me how it costs the town for over fifty-five community with no kids going to the school?
It doesn't. It doesn't. Education is, Jeff, as a member of the Finance Committee. Jeff, as a member of the Finance.
I believe Mr. Upton was being interrupted, but I think they both should be speaking. So if you can finish your point, Ms. Shores Ness, you've got full. Oh, Ms. Shores Ness, please.
I just wanted to let you know that seventy percent of our budget, just about, is school-related, as you know, Jeff.
Right.
So residential has that cost. If it's over fifty-five, that's a different situation. And we are certainly very open to senior housing. But it's not appropriate in an E D, E P D district, an expedited permitting district, when you have tractor-trailer trucks and snowplows and highway garages and elderly drivers.
I would just appreciate it in the future if we were a little more careful on our terminology in expenses, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Russo?
I may be gay myself, I probably am, but I don't care. Gordon, almost years ago, the board was on the Finance Committee, made a phenomenal presentation. I wasn't a big fan of Gordon. He did a great presentation at the town meeting, explaining for every tax dollar that we collect, a business cost to town at Deerfield, but I don't remember the exact numbers.
Thirty-five percent. Thirty-five cents of the dollar.
All right, so thirty-five cents of the dollar. So it costs us sixty-five cents of that dollar we collect, thirty-five cents is left over. For every dollar residential we collect, it costs the town like a dollar seventeen or a dollar eighteen of providing services. So maybe it's time for the Finance Committee to update a presentation like that for us all at the town meeting to help us understand the difference between business and residential. And maybe throw in a fifty-five home community and how that would impact. So we all have an idea, a level set on the tax base and the cost of services, because we know services have changed. Ambulance used to be free back then, and now we say for today. And we're paying more for sewer today than we did in the past. So it may be worth it to bring that up. And then we can maybe ask some of those big nonprofits that gather into town and don't pay their share for that.
Just conferring with council, it's important to note that that district is not zoned for residential. So it would require a special permit at the outset before anything could even be done residential, regardless of where you fall on the issue. So I think that is relevant and important. So, Mr. Hiltji?
To Hiltji, three thirty, Green Hill Road. So just to clarify for people in attendance, if I'm understanding correctly, the town sold to Dumont acres at a hundred thousand dollars an acre. And assuming that a deal like that is available for the town, if we in fact repurchase, that means that sixty-five thousand dollars per acre would be coming back to the town. And if you don't buy the land back, that.
They would make.
New England Natural Bakers has the opportunity to make sixty-five thousand dollar an acre profit. And this is a company that made a yield to town and then the net on that yield. And I would ask, if I could ask Lisa Mead to note, in the future, would it be possible to do a contingent sale that says that we will sell you the land for X amount of dollars, but the sale doesn't take place until you actually break ground and start to build?
So as you can imagine, there were many negotiations that included this repurchase and the timing of it related to the financing that they were going to get to build their building. So that was actually part of the negotiations at one time. When would the town have the opportunity to purchase back if they didn't start constructing? Those negotiations went all over the place and resulted in this ability to repurchase the property at the price they purchased it at. So the select board was very on top of that, but it was a negotiation process and this is where it ended up.
Mr. Drucker?
Originally, that entire person.
If you could speak up as loud as you can, just.
I believe the original person sold for a million five. I could be wrong, but I think it was originally about a million five. Was it one point eight? Nice tanker, I think. What I would like to do is talk about the fact that this article, I agree with buying the property back, but I'm cautious about letting the selectmen just turn around at any given meeting, putting it on the agenda and selling it that night or agreeing to sell it. I think it ought to come back to town meeting where these people that are here tonight can have a say in whether they like the deal or they don't like the deal. And I would like to offer a motion to strike after resale the words and to authorize the selectmen to in fact sell said property. And counsel is, mark out the language. Reason for it is, I think, that I come back to town meetings and not get just done. And it's up to the people here, they want to strike that, that's fine, if they don't. But for heaven's sakes, we don't want to buy it because it's really what we, we need to own it.
At this point, there's a motion to amend, so we have to take a second on that and then discuss it. So is there a mo, second?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Shores Ness?
What I'd like to say is the reason why it's attractive for us as a select board to be the permitting authority and to control this. Oh, the reason why it's attractive for the select board to control this parcel and to negotiate is because you can do this in a relatively speedy manner. And that was the point of having the economic permitting, or expedited permitting district. And the reason why is, that's one of the reasons we have the Dumont Corporation right now. Within a year, they purchased the property and they were open to business. And we would not have been able to have them in town and have their building, brand-new lovely building, and their taxes without having the ability to fast-track it. And I realize that, again, you're trusting us as a select board, but we truly feel that it is necessary to be able to negotiate. And we would certainly not negotiate with the best interests of town at heart. I always look at this as if it was my neighborhood and my neighbor. And that's why I feel it's important that we have the ability to do this. We really do have the best interests of the town at heart and we are certainly not going to make a decision that is negative to our downtown.
Just before entertaining other comments, does everyone understand that right now there's a motion to amend? And we can run through the article again if anyone has questions on what's being asked to amend? Or is everyone okay? We'll continue the discussion. Sir?
Yeah, can you just read the amended?
Yes.
Passage, please?
So it's Article nine, if you have your motions in front of you. And I'll start from the top for coherency, but I'll tell you when we get to the point that the motion is to amend. Move the town vote to authorize the select board to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain and to raise and appropriate by borrowing the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars to fund said purchase or taking along with, along as well as all other costs incidental and related thereto, to acquire the parcel of land for a price of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Said land identified as approximately nine-point-two-seven-five-five acres, more or less. Plan Book one forty, Plan Book one forty, Plan forty-one, located off of Marigan Way and owned by the New England Natural Bakers by deed recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds, Book seven-one-eight-three, page one-twenty-one. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Deerfield and to be used for general municipal purposes or for resale. At that point, the motion is to strike the words and to authorize the select board to in fact sell said property. That's the end of the strikeout. And then the motion continues as it reads. Mr. McDaniel?
I think it's important to allow the select board to negotiate it. It'd be very difficult to negotiate a real estate sale with every member of town. You elect a select board to manage this business for you and, you know, you'll have the opportunity in the spring to get another select board member. But I think, I think you should trust the select board to negotiate on your best behalf. And personally, my opinion is that we need economic development in the town. And I was so thrilled to go last Monday night to see thirty-five new jobs and all brand-new machines in there and then come to Leo's table and all the different places in town to get lunch. And it was just very infectious to see his enthusiasm for the jobs that he's bringing to town. And I'd like to duplicate that on a larger scale there. So that's my, that's my goal.
Mr. Drucker?
Mr. Moderator, when I'm not taking away the selectmen's authority to negotiate and bring back a purchase and sale agreement and to do their fast permitting and all that stuff, but bring the, bring the deal back to the town meeting and let it get blessed. Because the way it stands now, they can post a meeting on Friday, right? They can hold a meeting on Wednesday night and they can sell it. And there's no, there's no feedback to it. They can agree to sell it and it's all over with. I think it needs to come back to town meeting. That's all. I'm not trying to stop the permitting authority or anything else. I just think it needs to come back to town meeting. If they want to agree to bring it back, that's fine. We, I can withdraw my motion if that's what they, they'll agree to it. But I want to make sure that we've got a check and a balance. That's all.
Council just asked the rest of the council.
So when the board of selectmen, or select board go to sell his property, they have to issue an RFP. They can't do it overnight, they can't just pick somebody and then decide to sell it to them. So I just want to be clear about that, that's an RFP. It has to be posted on the state website, the central register. It has to be advertised in the newspaper. So just to be clear that there is a process, it's a very public process required under the law in order to sell the property.
Mr. Kereski?
Two questions on that RFP. Do, if we read it and we don't like it, do we have any power to override it?
No.
Or turn it down?
Nope.
If we don't like the language of it?
So.
Otherwise, the notice to us is really meaningless.
So the process for the select board in the past is they've developed an RFP and it has criteria, then they discuss it, they've actually then sent it back for revision. So those meetings are all public meetings. I can't speak to the select board, but I've not given them an RFP yet that they've approved in one meeting. So that's, it is, it is a process that they go through about what the criteria are that are necessary for a potential proposal to be selected.
I understand that, but what? I understand that. But what power do the vote, power for lack of a better word, do the voters, yeah, if they don't like the land in the RFP, do we have any?
You would have to come to the Select Board meeting and have that discussion with the Select Board.
But it's still their vote.
Yes.
So, then we have no power over how it's sold.
You have persuasion.
Which leads me to the next thing. It was, it's, it's being bought back at approximately $35,000 an acre. And based on the Dumont sales price, it's worth $100,000 an acre. So, if you really, if the objective is to get jobs, sell for $35,000 an acre, you'll get jobs. So, where between $35,000 and $100,000 are you going to, what are you going to sell it for to get the jobs? Do you have any amount in mind?
I would love 100. I mean, that's what we did last time.
Yeah, but if it's...
Sure. If it's 75, we'd look at that. But I mean, we don't have the offer on the table yet. And it depends on what kind of jobs they're bringing.
Mr. Upton?
Yeah, just very quickly, two things. One, I believe it came through the annual town meeting when we purchased it. So, I believe with Bob Decker that probably should come through a town meeting, whether it be special town meeting, annual town meeting, or whatever, to let the public have a say. The other thing that I'm aware of dealing with several committees is this committee may not exist when we finally sell this land again. Committees, the makeup committees changes all the time. So, and I, with all due respect to the committee, I have no doubt of good intentions. But you may not have the same people sitting here in front of us when we go to sell that property.
Still a question or comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, committee, meaning not the Select Board, do you mean the planning committee? They're not a committee, right?
No.
The Select Board. Okay. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I feel like we, I've never been a part of a community where the town gets to negotiate or vote like the way that people are talking about on buying and selling land. What I do understand is that we vote for our representatives, and our representatives then represent us. And so, I know not everyone's happy with our representation. I know that feeling well in this, in my life and not in this town. But I do feel like that's where our vote is. That's where our voice is. And we did vote for this. This Select Board has been voted in by the town of Deerfield. And I think that the RFP process, in my experience with the Select Board, has been that there are meetings. There are very active meetings. There are very contentious meetings at times. People's voices are heard, and people get online, and people get, go down to the dump and talk about what they want or don't want. I mean, I feel like there's a lot of active engagement in this town, and that we will continue to have that. But ultimately, we can't all be talking to Realtors. I mean, that is sort of the thing, that we vote for you to do that for us. And I think the previous things that we voted on, getting more, better staff in town is going to help this process. So, we've already kind of got that in place. So, I appreciate the work you're doing. And I appreciate that we can disagree, and that's okay, too. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Walton?
Well, I was on the board when we actually sold that property to them. Those of you who remember, we actually had a couple of public meetings with them here for presentations before we did any movement on anything. We tried to, you know, we weren't doing this in a vacuum. And obviously, selling that property for what we sold it for, if, in our opinion at the time, this is what the town wanted. And so, that's why we did it. It wasn't, you know, just because we wanted to move the property and get it off the books.
Yes?
Lee Wade South River Road. I have a question. In the process, does whatever company who comes forward, do they have to go to the planning board as well? So, no, they do not?
No.
Oh, great.
So, it's just a select...
Ms. Schorsness?
The reason why we set up the Expedited Permitting District is it was zoning that Lisa's firm, well, before Lisa's firm, but it was Lisa's, she was part of that firm, was to set it up so we could not go through the planning board. We were not trying to bypass the planning board process. It was, the Select Board became the planning board process so that you could go in a speedier manner because there's three versus a whole board. And the, the idea was to have economic stress on economics.
So, are they, are they still required to adhere to all of our...
Yes.
...requirements? It's just that what you've done is expedite the zoning. And do you typically have members of the zoning board or the Zoning Board of Appeals participating in those as well?
We solicit comments. And we, obviously, we're taking input from, you know, the neighbors and neighborhood and what concerns. I mean, we have light, you know, we talk about lighting. We do all the same things that the planning board do. What's the traffic load? What kind of, you know...
The environmental assessments?
Right. All this kind of stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
It isn't, it's just that it's a different process in the fact that we can make decisions a little bit more speedy. We meet on a more regular basis. We can meet, you know, right after one another kind of thing versus, you know, a month, every monthly meeting.
Attorney, do you want to add to that?
The expedited permitting law was passed during the middle of the downturn in order to do exactly what the Select Board member said, was to allow one body help expedite permitting to help encourage economic development. And that's exactly what they've done.
Yes?
You said that the, first of all, can you explain what RFP means and what the process is? You said that say anyway that the voters can maybe put their input.
That would be a request for proposal, Mr. McDaniel. Would you like to expand briefly on it?
Yeah. It would be a request for proposal. So, anytime the town does something, they would, they would typically request for proposals. So, companies could then propose bids on the property or propose to do, you know, anything for the town. All kinds of things go out for request for proposal or request for price or request for qualification.
And these are open, public meetings?
Yes.
Everything is public.
Everything's open and public, yeah.
Mr. Hildge? Go ahead, Mr. Hildge.
Well, I was just going to move the question on the amendment.
Oh, if we can let one more question, sir. I appreciate it. Yes.
I saw there was another person.
I apologize. Thank you.
Ava Gibbs on River Road. I just heard Carolyn say that the Dumont thing had to go, it went quickly. I think that's what she said. So, I think this is a case of, it sounds to me that we can trust the Select Board. I don't know what all this trust is. And there's plenty of checks and balances above what we just heard. And the fact that we had one company that we had to work quickly with them, this can happen. This is what happens with businesses. So, if we had to bring everything to a town meeting and now it's a special town meeting, we would be completely constipated as a town.
Can you tell she's from Brooklyn originally?
Give me one more.
Talk on it.
Ms. Petrock?
I'm Sharon Petrock. I have a quick question because it's been out there for a long, long time. Why did the town sell that property initially so reasonable per acre? And this is the concern of some of the seniors out there now because they're having a hard enough time paying their taxes now. So, they're worried about who's going to buy it, we all are sooner or later, and the cost of the land. Who makes that decision?
Ms. McDaniel?
I would take a, I was not here on the board at that time, but I would take a stab that it was, it was an economic downturn. And there was not a lot of opportunity at the time where it's a little bit different now. I think we, you know, luckily, we're still in a good run for the economy, and businesses are still buying and producing. But I believe at the time, it was kind of, there weren't a lot of choices, and it was to create some jobs and get things moving. But so, and that's why I kind of think it's such a great idea to buy it back. I mean, not that we'd want, who wants to buy that kind of amount of property, but at least we have the ability to, to make a profit, maybe. Not that we'd ever break even on what we spent for the property, but it would, we'd be in a better position now, I think, with this economy, to get a higher price and maybe more selective, more jobs in the area.
And move it faster.
And move it faster, so.
Ms. Schorsness, did you have any thing to add or question?
I, I just, Sharon, as you know, we had the potential for 164 housing units there. And, you know, we just felt it was important to control the property. And, and we bought the property high. Everyone knew that because the economy crashed within a year and, or within a few months. And there was nothing, you know, we could do about it. And Natural Bakers was a good company for us. You know, they were local. They had growth potential. And the, we just felt that there was going to be good opportunities for them to be here. And we had it discussed. We've had, you know, multiple meetings on that. And we gave them opportunity after opportunity. But they've had multiple changes in management. And the manager they have now, between the gas mortitorium and opportunities in Greenfield, they decided to stay in Greenfield.
Mr. Hildge?
I move the question.
The question has been moved. At this point, there's no, no further debate.
Mr. Moderator?
There's been a motion to move, Mr. Decker.
I realize that, but I have a motion on the floor, and I am entitled to a close if you check your book.
Yeah, I think we're going to do it, right? That's the motion we're voting on, right?
I don't believe there is, Mr. Decker. We can take a moment, check that.
You have a vote on the amendment for...
Right now, there's a motion to move the question. That would be the only thing we're talking about with a closing on. You still would have a right to speak. Just give us a moment.
I'm not a lawyer, but I think I've read it at some point.
It's not a legal question. It's all what town, town meeting time says. Neither town council or I find that, Mr. Decker. So, at this point, we're going to rule that out of order. There's a motion to, to call the question. That would require a two-thirds vote. All we're doing at this point is, is calling the question. So, all those in favor? I'm sorry. I apologize. I wasn't being clear. So, at this point, the motion to amend is before the, the town.
Is it the motion to amend, are we voting to stop debate on the amendment?
You are stopping debate on the amendment. And I apologize for not being clear. All we're doing at this point is voting to stop debate on the question.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. At this point, we're on to the motion to amend. Yes.
Yes.
We did not. We did not.
You're right. He's right. Motion to amend.
At this point, the motion to amend as presented is before you. It has been called to question. There is no more debate. We find nothing to support a closing statement. So, all those in favor of the motion to amend? That requires a simple majority, which does not pass. So, the motion to amend has not passed. So, we're back to the underlying Article Nine motion. Are there any further comments or questions on the motion as presented by Ms. Schorsness? All those in favor of that motion, and that requires the two-thirds majority. Those opposed? That motion carries by two-thirds. And with that, and none too soon, I would move to dissolve. All those in favor? The meeting is dissolved. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody!